Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular session of the Scarborough Town Council Wednesday, February 3, 2016, meeting called to order. And if you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilor Bayvine?
Present.
Councilor Rowan?
Here.
Councilor Katerina?
Here.
Councilor Hayes?
Here.
Councilor Chiazo?
Here.
Chairman Dunneby?
Here. As many of you may know, a former town council member, Jim Benedict, passed away on this Sunday. And I would like to ask everyone to take a moment of silence to honor his memory. A very fine man. We'll go to general public comments and anyone wishing to address the council on anything other than what's on agenda this evening can approach the podium.
My name is Susan Hamon and I live on Page 3 of Pine Point. And I came to the workshop because there were a couple of issues regarding Pine Point. And I am very concerned about the Charlie Gendron proposal to discontinue Avenue 2. I think that we've got a public access point and we don't have too many public access points to the beach. And I think it comes down to if the town does in fact still own this road and have rights to this road, should we decide that we don't want the road, it's 50 feet wide, let's sell it at fair market value. If we don't have a right to the road anymore, that our rights have been extinguished because the town took no action, well, basically, there is nothing we can do. And they already own it. So if they do already own it, does the town then go back and get taxes from them for the years that they actually enjoyed the property? So I would ask you to please go very slowly with this. I think it's the last thing that the residents of Pine Point would want to see right now.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak, please approach the podium.
My name is Chris Lyford from 100 Point Drive in Scarborough. First, I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity to speak and also for your service. My wife Carrie is a recent new member of this Board of Education and I'm more aware than ever of the commitment that you all have made to the town and to the service that you put in. So thank you for that. I'm also here as a member of the supporter of Scarborough Schools tonight and further as a parent of three kids in the school system, one at Wentworth and one at the Blue Point -- two at the Blue Point Schools. I was unable to attend the last meeting due to a school concert, but I did watch the meeting online afterward and wanted to make a few comments about the budget goals that were discussed and established at that meeting. I do this also in light of the Maine Department of Education's preliminary fiscal year 2016 and '17 essential programs and services funding model that shows Scarborough potentially receiving $1.5 million less this next budget year than this year. First, regarding the town council's recent budget goals, I was pleased to see an obvious level of compromise and camaraderie on the town council at that meeting. It's obvious that you spent a lot of time on it. After last year's budget cycle, we recognize the need for all of us to come together and to work together toward a better budget process. At the same time, I also urge you to have spirited debate. I think we need that in this town and I don't think it necessarily has to be per se divisive. Second, in that spirit, while I don't agree with having one of the goals of the council be a line in the sand of a fixed percentage increase in this year's budget, I agree with everyone's comments that compromise will be needed and tough choices will have to be made. With these competing points in mind, I still want to express my concern that we risk being stuck in the wrong paradigm of focusing on percentage increases in budgets rather than communicating the positives of restoring lost programming in schools or expanding staffing or adding learning opportunities to our schools for our kids. In particular, adding learning opportunities that help our kids thrive in the new economy that we face in the future. This is particularly important in relation to the potential for a reduction in school funding. It puts pressure on your line in the sand immediately and risks, again, creating the impression that we're growing budgets in an out of control manner. We must address the state funding problem. It's my hope that elected officials in Augusta will fight more for the town and for the schools in the future. But in the near term, we must focus on what we can affect in the town. We must not let state funding issues rob our schools of new investments that lead to better outcomes for kids. This coming budget cycle, I'm asking you to support new investments in program and clubs, sports, teachers, that help our students and our children succeed and thrive, even if these might push your line in the sand a little bit higher. I'll give you a very quick example, allowing for time if I have it. Several years ago, the intermediate schools and even primary schools lost foreign languages. It's my belief that it's more important than ever to introduce that at the younger ages. Study after study proves that that's incontrovertible. By my numbers, this won't add greatly to the town's mil rate, but it's a worthwhile effort to consider and I urge you to consider such improvements and for all of us to communicate that these are improvements to the town members, not just percentages. Therefore, it's my great hope that you'll set your sights above a line in the sand, hear our plea for investing well above level services, and support progress in the next school and town budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the town council?
Hi, my name is Mo Erickson. I live in Pine Point on the Pine Point Road. I grew up down in Pine Point and have lived there all my life, along with my family. I currently have four kids and a husband. And I know I missed the workshop earlier tonight about the, oh, I guess the gentrification, I would call it, of Pine Point, soon to be. I can tell you that as a lifelong Pine Pointer, please, leave it alone. All we need is a new sidewalk. One. One new sidewalk where the existing sidewalk is. Just come in, give us a new sidewalk. Take care of the parking that's a hazard from the, essentially, the depot road from Snow's Canning Factory to the Clambake. Take care of that. Put in a sidewalk from Bailey's Campground all the way down to the Old Orchard Beach Line. That's all we need. We don't need anything fancy. We don't need a third lane. We don't need lights. We don't need flashes. We all just need a new sidewalk. I beg you, please, leave my town, my little piece of heaven alone. I don't want anyone to come in and relegate and delegate how big my house is going to be or what kind of windows I need and on and on and on. There are so many people I know that feel the same way. And I'm just going to also ask you, please notify the people in Pine Point of what's in store and what people, somebody has this grandiose idea, hey, we're going to come in and beautify Pine Point and we want your opinion. I want you guys to phone us, call us, mail us, put it in the paper, because I know that a lot of the old Pine Pointer's down there feel exactly like I do. I mean, I think of a little part of Old Orchard, Ocean Park, and I see people flock to Ocean Park because it's been untouched. It's lovely. People walk. Nobody bothers them. It's not all beautified and made more modern. And that's what people like. And I have to say, I think most people in Pine Point like it the way it is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the town council?
I live at 9 Sequoia Lane. This is my daughter, Lila. I don't have a big speech plan, but I just wanted to reiterate what Chris had said earlier, that we have found out that we might have even further reduced funding from the state for our schools and that it's incredibly important to me and my family that we don't just maintain level services, but we start to try and add back some of what we've lost over the past years. And to do that, we might need to increase our budget past a certain percentage point. And it's not that we're overspending, but that we are losing money from the state. So I just wanted to put that in your ear for budget season, which I know is coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the town council? Close the general public comment period. Minutes of January 20, 2016, regular meeting. Your pleasure.
Move approval?
Second. Any corrections or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Justments to the agenda?
There are none.
None to be made? Items to be signed? There are Treasury warrants, which I will do later. No full business. Resolution 16-001, requesting the town council's support on the Transportation Improvement Program project to PAX. Pleasure of the council. Public comment first. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. Pleasure of the council.
So move.
Second. Discussion. Who would like to start? Start at this end, Chris?
Yeah, I just, for those of you who didn't go to the workshop, I just want to reiterate and for my benefit and theirs as well, this is not necessarily an action for a budget item. It's just to, I guess, acknowledge that this is the direction we'd want to move eventually as a town and as a council. So we're not talking about, as far as I'm aware, committing funds at this point. It's just more of a conceptual type of approach.
Thank you. I think a good point, Councilor Hayes, I'm going to ask the town manager, for those who did not or tuning in at 7:00 and did not see the workshop, for a little summary of what this resolution is intended to accomplish.
Yes, there are three projects that we'd like to request funding for, one of which is the Gorham Road reconstruction. This would be for funding cycle 2017. That would be construction in the spring of 2017 at the very earliest. The other projects are in the Pine Point area involving the intersection of Pine Point Road and East Grand Avenue and then East Grand Avenue itself. That's much further out in the 2019 to 2021 timeframe for construction. Gorham Road project is farther along in conversation and design. We've had at least two public engagement meetings and intend to have more. We've not even begun that process with Pine Point Road. So to the speakers that addressed you moments ago, clearly, that's a process that we need to undertake and some of that conversation will happen as soon as the spring. But the action in front of you is really to lend your endorsement to staff's application for getting in the funding queue or funding cycle. It makes no firm commitments other than blessing the application. Should we be successful, there certainly will be future action and consideration for you at that time.
And this is a requirement of submitting the applications. If you want to be able to, they're scored applications. And if you want it to be given the same consideration as other applications from other communities, it's necessary to have the town council of each body, each municipality endorse the application.
It's worth noting, I'm going to estimate, but I suspect there's probably 10 times as much money requested as there is available. So these are very competitive, you know, having the elected body, at least at the front end, give some nod that this is a direction that's worth pursuing, you know, is an important part of that. But it's highly competitive, so the more complete, and this is a requirement, our application is, the better chances are.
Recognize, Councilor Hayes, who is also on the Transportation Committee, which has reviewed this.
Yeah, and for the purpose of the audience, I just wanted to share that it's been, it's a very dedicated committee that has spent a lot of time reviewing this and asking questions and really well vetted. I've been really impressed with the amount of work done by the staff, the amount of public input that's taken place already, especially on the Gorham Road project. And as a liaison, I guess I would recommend that we move forward with going after the funding and getting in the queue, so to speak. I'm just, kudos to you guys, great, great work. And the public should rest assured that there's been public meetings and a lot of folks that have weighed in and the meetings, the Transportation Committee meetings are open. So come join us as we continue the conversation. Thank you.
Comments from others? Satisfied? I will say that the planning staff and Mike Shaw's operation has looked at this very carefully. And we are holding meetings on the first, most recent phase, the close, nearest-in phase already. I attended a public session that was very well-attended. Many, many people in those neighborhoods along Gorham Road who would be impacted participated. So people should expect more of that. And this is one step in the road towards getting as much funding as we can from additional sources. So, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business. Order number 16-011, first reading and schedule a planning board public hearing on the proposed amendment to Chapter 405, the zoning ordinance of the town of Scarborough, Maine, Section Roman numeral 3, nonconformant subsection C, to allow nonconforming structures to be elevated to meet floodplain requirements. I would ask the town planning director to address this for everyone's benefit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this is a zoning amendment, really to eliminate two conflicting ordinances that exist right now. It's actually been a longstanding issue. It came up recently with the Higgins Beach zoning updates that we've worked on and the council's very involved in over the past six or eight months, where our zoning ordinance says that nonconforming structures can't be enlarged, expanded, and increased in height. That's the key piece of discussion for this amendment. And we have a lot of nonconforming structures in our beach communities along the beach frontage. Again, we address some of that through Higgins Beach, but we have a lot of nonconforming structures that also happen to be in the shoreline areas and in our flood zones. And in our flood zones, the flood ordinance that's required by the state and federal government requires you and encourages you to elevate structures for resiliency and for loss of property and life during storms. So right now, often, property owners want to modernize their beachfront home or cottage. They want to make it more resilient. They want to elevate it to meet flood zone requirements. And because they're nonconforming, another ordinance, the zoning ordinance, says you have to go to the zoning board to get a variance to do that. So in what ordinance, we're saying you're required to elevate if you're making improvements or if you want to be more resilient in another, we're not allowing it. We're saying the only way you can do it is to get a variance. So that puts property owners in a sort of a catch-22 and sends them to the zoning board to do something that we expect them to do somewhere else in our ordinances. So this is a fairly simple amendment to say that increasing the height of a structure that might be nonconforming isn't, is allowed for, doesn't require you to get a variance. If you're doing other things with a nonconforming structure, like adding on or expanding in other ways, you still would need to get a variance because that's not something that's required for, in our flood zones. But if you're simply elevating a structure to be better protected about, better protected from flooding impacts, then that doesn't need to get a variance. That can be something that they go in and get a building permit and then meet the flood zone requirements and can do by right. So it's kind of a cleanup matter that we've had a need to address for a while. And we want to do it separate from the Higgins Beach initiative because this is a broader scope. It applies to all of our flood zones and our coastal areas. So that's why we're bringing it to you now after the Higgins Beach effort's been accomplished. So I'm happy to answer questions if you have any on this.
We'll start down here. Marie, you want to go first? And then Will?
Yeah. Dan, just, I support this. I think this makes all the sense in the world. But I can hear some people who live in these areas saying, so, someone wants to raise their house by, I forget what the height is for the resilience, but, and now I'm not going to be able to see the ocean from my second-story window, and what recourse do I have? Whereas before, they could at least go before ZBA and complain.
They could. Yeah, I mean, the allowance is to elevate only for the flood zone requirements.
Right.
So it's actually dictated by the other ordinance that you need to do it.
Okay, that's, I just wanted you to admit.
Yeah.
I'm just bringing forth something I know you can hear about.
Right, no. If people are elevating more than is required by the flood zone requirements or elevating in different locations, not because of the flood zone requirements, then they wouldn't be entitled to do it without a variance. So that's kind of a subtlety that needs to be identified. Yeah.
Councilor Rowan?
So, I mean, I guess I don't have a good understanding. How high are we talking is typical for one of these requirements?
It totally varies based on the location of the property as it relates to the highest annual tide. So it, in Higgins Beach, typically a structure, and this is typically, but, so it varies, a structure is kind of five feet higher than street level. You know, that's common. If you're close right along the ocean, you might be the first, I mean, the first floor. So the first floor is five feet higher than the street level. If you're closer to the beach in some places, it might be seven. But if you're back further from the beach and you're further up gradient, you might only be elevating three feet instead of a foot and a half, which might be typical for a foundation. So it's very dependent on the building site's relationship to the high-tide line, basically.
So if I'm understanding correctly, then typically, the house is currently at street level, they're elevating that five to seven feet if they're oceanfront, or are they already three feet up and they need to go up another two?
It totally varies. It's for, generally, they're older cottages that haven't been added on to or updated and property owners want to lower their insurance rates. They want to be more protected from storm damage. And in some cases, they want to renovate for other reasons. And so those are the properties we're dealing with, where they're cottages that weren't designing to be at all kind of resilient to storms. Often, they're, they don't even have a foundation. You know, it might be, they might be in a wood foundation, a cinder block foundation that could be, and Bill probably has firsthand knowledge of this, they could be a foot above, you know, ground level. It could be two, and they might need to go to five. They might, you know, anywhere from three to eight feet needs to be their new first-floor
Other questions? Councilor Hayes?
So two questions, Dan. My understanding is there's already a height limit restriction in that zone. Which would override? If they go above floodplain, would they have to go in front of the ZBA to get a zone amendment to exceed that height? If they're just lifting the whole structure up and it puts them above that height? Or does one, would this override the height limitations in zoning?
This would not override the height limitations in zoning. In the town shoreline zoning, which is actually the same area that these properties would be in, in most cases, the height limit is 35 feet to the top of the structure, so usually the ridge line. So this isn't relieving them of that height limitation. It's relieving them of going to the zoning board for just elevating the first sto, where the first story starts. So they'd still have to abide by the 35-foot height limit unless they went to the zoning board to get relief from that. But this doesn't relieve them of that automatically.
Okay. And the second question I have, I know you mentioned in the workshop earlier, the FEMA flood maps are getting updated. Do we, what kind of impact do we see in terms of potentially increasing the impact of this? Or are we just kind of anticipating it's, you know, it's just going to be restricted kind of the same areas with different criteria, if you will?
Yeah, the flood maps are likely to add more properties to, certainly to the flood zones. The revisions are going to go more inland from the shoreline. I think that's very likely. The devils are in details as to how far and in what areas exactly. That's where we've been working hard on reviewing the maps and being ready for whether we appeal their approach. But, yeah, certainly, more properties will be faced with that as the maps are updated, faced with this kind of conflict. And this is in part why we want to address this before then.
Dan, to pick up on Councilor Hayes's question, the FEMA flood maps are likely to demonstrate more properties being within the 100-year floodplain, which, as I understand it, is really an insurance issue as opposed to shoreline zoning issue?
It's an insurance issue. It's also a requirement to, as it relates to this, to elevate your structure if you're improving the structure, over 50% of the value of the structure. If you're improving a structure, you need to elevate to meet the, you know, the requirements to be one foot above the base flood elevation. So that's another component to this, yes, insurance rates and structural changes if you're investing in your property.
Other questions? Will?
Could you help me understand the height limit? Is that measured from the ground or is that measured from the first floor, the overall height of the structure? So if you lift it up, the height limit goes up with you?
The height limit doesn't change. The height limit's 35 feet from the ground and it's like average grade. So all this is doing is saying that if, because right now, there's a lot of one-and-a-half-story cottages that have room to grow vertically. And so if you had a one-and-a-half-story cottage that right now has a foot, the first floor is a foot above grade and the peak is at 20 feet, then, and the requirement is to elevate now seven feet above grade to meet flood requirements, then that structure's 27 feet high versus 20, for example. So it's still complying with the height limit, but it's elevated the first floor. So that's not living space. It's on piles. It's unfinished space that can withstand flooding and protect the living space above.
Great, thank you.
Chris?
Sorry, just a quick follow-up to on the FEMA maps. Is that also going to not just broaden the area, but it's going to change the height of the floodplain as well? Was that, or is it just the area?
It's, I think it would recalculate base flood elevations, yeah. So it could affect existing properties that are in the flood zone.
Would it, would it make sense perhaps to wait? I mean, when are those maps going to become updated and available? I mean, I don't know if we're in the middle of it or if it's close to the end or...
It's a good question, though, to clarify.
It's a perennially moving target. They now say the maps might come out this spring, which restarts a process that had been restarted a few times in the past five years. And then there's a, it's a very long process in terms of the maps are released, there's a review period, there's a public comment period, there then is an appeal period. So even if it starts this spring, it's probably another two years before the new ones are adopted. And that's, I guess, with a lot of uncertainty. There are people today that are interested in making improvements that are in the flood zone now. You know, I think that would be, if the council's comfortable with it, I encourage you to, you know, kind of move forward with it. For those that are affected now, there'll be additional ones that will result from the new map, certainly. There'll be additional ones that will result from the new map, certainly.
Counselor Bayden?
I think you just answered my question, but let me ask it just in case if I didn't hear it right. So this is, I think, a great move. It's kind of, to me, obvious that you need to do this. Question I have is that, because I know, by the way, if you think, this is going to be a really serious issue, because this isn't about beachfront properties, this is about a very wet rural community that we live in, that's going to affect a lot of houses even that are significantly away from the shoreline. Are there other ordinances that we'll be looking at in the near future, once we understand where this flood mapping is going? Because I would see, I mean, there's going to be setback issues from, you know, flood zones and other environmental issues that come up. Is that going to be a major effort of your department later? Or is that going to be relied on through conservation and some of the town committees?
In terms of just kind of overall resiliency, in terms of flooding and...
Well, just the impact of the changes to the flood map, once it becomes known, I think there's going to be a significant overhaul of many ordinances and rules and guidelines that we have to follow. And is that on our forefront?
Yeah, we'll have to really look at what the maps look like, the scope of the changes, and how that interplays with other, the zoning ordinance and other ordinances. We have done, the past few years, we've done some pretty kind of creative things with our stream buffers, where we've required greater stream buffers, actually to, in the case of new development, keep people away from floodplains so they're not faced with these issues. So they're not, this year, building in a floodplain, and then a few years from now, having to elevate because of these changes. So we've been looking at things like that. The Conservation Commission's kind of involved in that. So I think we'd continue to do that.
Good, good. Thank you.
Will?
Sorry, you said something a minute ago that I was a little bit confused by. I was hoping you'd clarify. You said there are a couple that are waiting to do improvements that would be impacted by this. My understanding was that if there's any kind of improvement, if they're nonconforming, they would still have to go before the board.
ZBA?
Well, there's some properties in Higgins Beach that now meet the current Higgins Beach code, and they wouldn't have to get a variance, but for, they'd have to get a variance to elevate to meet flood requirements.
Even though they're not conforming?
They're noncon, they were...
Well, they're conforming.
Yeah, they're nonconforming in terms of, like, one of their setbacks. And so they can't, and they're not allowed to move their building around. They have to just elevate it vertically. There's so many different rules right along the shoreline that basically constrain anything you can do. There's the sand dune rules, there's shoreline rules. So, yeah, they're nonconforming based on how close they are to a property line, but they're not allowed to move their buildings. But they can add on in a different place. If they're adding on a different place, they have to elevate the whole structure, to give you the whole story.
Great, I think I understand. Thank you.
Chris?
Sorry, just a follow-up. So recalling from Higgins Beach, there are some aesthetic criteria that's associated with that. Now, thinking about, you know, and down in Florida and other places, you have a lot of beach houses on stilts. How, do you see any conflict necessarily between that design and that aesthetic or that structure with the existing Higgins Beach zoning requirements now? Or would they be allowed to, as long as they're within the height footprint requirements and restrictions, they can put a house on stilts and have it up there?
Yeah, the Higgins Beach code actually included kind of design recommendations on how to treat the, you know, the elevated structure, the part of the structure, so below the first floor, with like latticework or, you know, different approaches. So there's actually some good guidance in the zoning code to address that as best as possible. Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions at the moment? We'll have, thank you, Dan. Public comment? Anyone wishing to address this can approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Pleasure aboard.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion. Who'd like to start? Start at this end.
Thank you. I think this is the logical reaction to something that's needed to move it forward. I'm pleased to hear that we'll keep in mind, because this has been something, the whole floodplain issue and the flood zones have been an issue. And while this might be a political opinion, to me, it is a direct relationship to the AIG and the whole recessionary issues that we dealt with, and then also the severe weather, things that we've dealt with, whether it's sandy and, you know, the other pieces. So it's about insuring properties is what it comes down to, I really believe. This isn't about houses not being high enough and low enough, it's about whether or not those houses can get insured and their property being protected. So I think that this is the right move for this. And I think it's going to be a bigger deal down the road for houses that aren't even close to the shoreline and, you know, they're within that 25-foot, 40-feet of the flood zone and what that's going to do. Because if I remember correctly, and I talked to with one citizen, the remapping is pretty significant where the houses that were originally within the 25, or away from the 25 feet, now that part of their house is actually in the flood zone. So, and that's like inland. So this is going to be a bigger issue.
Other comments?
Chris?
So for first reading, I think it's, you know, it makes sense, the fact that, I think we're still limited in height, the overriding concern, I think, maybe some residents would have, is what's it going to look like? What's it going to, you know, if I have to look at something like this? There's things within the existing ordinances in terms of treating it aesthetically and in height limitation. So I don't see any initial problems. It's a first reading, so I'd welcome comments from anybody, obviously, to other opinions between now and second reading. But as it stands now, with explanations from Mr. Bacon, I don't see any reason that we wouldn't move this forward.
I will say that, as the town planner pointed out, there is no compromise in the height issue. This is really a matter of eliminating an inconsistency. One aspect of the ordinance mandates a change, the other prohibits it. And we're really eliminating the condition that mandates elevating when certain conditions of improvement to the property are initiated. Seeing no other comment? All in favor? Opposed? This will now go to the planning board for its review. And we'll be back for a second reading with the recommendation of the planning board as soon as the planning board's had the opportunity to review it. Next order of business, Order 16-012, Act on the Request to amend Chapter 302A, the Town Committee Board's manual relating to the Scarborough Housing Alliance. As a way of introduction, I'll ask the town manager to give a little clarification as to what is involved in this matter.
Yes. And I may also defer to Counselor Rowan, who's on the Housing Alliance. But as a matter of basic structure, Tony could probably recall the year, but during my tenure, it must have been in 2010 or 11, actually, the Rules and Policies Committee of the council extracted out a bunch of the different committee structures that have been adopted through the various decades, frankly. They were all embedded in different ways, forms or another, in Chapter 302. And they pulled them out, consulted them all in 302A, and it's really a manual. So all of the boards and committees that have formal structure and are standing, their initial enabling legislation, any unique scope and requirements associated, and also including composition. Many of them are very clear in what their membership is made up of, and certainly how many members each has. In this particular case, the Housing Alliance, during my nine years having involved, I don't think we've ever had a full complement of seven members. And though there are fairly rare occasions where they're taking formal votes, they often find themselves lacking a quorum. So with that, and I'll perhaps defer to Counselor Rowan to talk about what solution has come forward.
Sure. So the observation has been, in the two meetings since I've been the liaison, that we haven't had a quorum. It's a fairly, you know, there are a couple of open seats on the committee right now. So the solution that we came up with was to make the liaison a voting member instead of a non-voting member, and therefore increase the chance that we'll have a quorum at a meeting in case there was an action that needed to be taken.
So the amendment to the manual is a single amendment to make the liaison town council member a voting member of the committee. Public comment? Anyone in the audience wishing to make a comment on this? Close public comment. With your pleasure.
Move approval?
Second.
I will say that, after checking with the town clerk, this is a manual. It is not an ordinance that requires a first and second reading. And therefore, it's action that is up for final adoption tonight. Any comments? Chris, then we'll go to Peter.
Sorry. A question. Why, did we consider going from seven to five members and then having a quorum be easier to obtain? And if we did, what were the, maybe the downsides of doing that versus having the council member a voting member? And if there's any really kind of precedent or any concerns with having a council member as a voting member for that particular board?
So we did talk about the idea of making the committee smaller. That was another option that we had. The hope is that we're going to, housing is a fairly, affordable housing is a fairly diverse skill set that we're looking for on the board, and we're hoping to fill it out with a number of different positions of people with different talents. And so the, this was what we came up with. The model was actually the Historic Preservation Implementation Committee, which has the liaison as a voting member, and it works well there. So we thought we would adopt that as well.
And as a practical matter, I can say that very consistently, there are three members plus the liaison has been a religious attendee. So there's very comfortably four members who are at these meetings. So I think the group can function, and ideally, we'd like to fill it out with some extra expertise.
Peter?
Well, I think, just to kind of build on the question and Tom's comment, how many of the other liaisons are actually voting members of committees? I kind of assumed that most of them are not. Are those the only two exceptions that we have?
We'll do some research, but I believe you might be correct. I think the former Counselor Holbrook, having been long-served on the Alliance, I think took that experience when the Historic Preservation Committee was formed, and I suspect she was quite influential in making that happen in that regard. It seems to be a workable solution. Certainly, you could change the total number, and that would accomplish the same thing as well.
I guess only my perspective is just the, you know, the liaison, how the council members be liaisons to kind of bring things to the table and explain them is a little bit different than actually being a voting member of the committee. So I just, I struggle with that a little bit.
I guess the only thing I would say, there was some conversation, does that potentially put the member of council in a conflict?
Right.
At least, for purposes of the Housing Alliance, there are very few, if any, I mean, it's advisory to the council. There's no final action taken. They're not quasi-judicial in any capacity. Their decisions are not final, they're advisory only. So I think the likelihood of a conflict is slim to none, at least in that capacity. And that's not to say other committees, it might be an issue.
Yeah, I'm more worried about precedent and what does it say.
Other comments?
I guess I would say, in answer to that, I'm only on a couple committees, so I just thought this was going to work. But we did talk about it at the meeting, and I think the, Tom's point was, kind of carried the day from that perspective, that given the nature of the committee, it's probably not going to be an issue. But I see your point as well.
Actually, in 2004, they increased the membership from five to seven.
I'm not sure why.
I'm not sure.
Those were the boom years, though, right?
Other comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Five in favor, one against.
Thank you.
No, non-action items. Standing as special committee reports and liaison reports. Jean Marie, why don't we start with you and we'll work down?
Mine's going to be very short. Long-range planning committee was moved to February 12th, so we didn't meet. And Conservation Commission meets next Monday at 7 o'clock in Town Hall, and that's it.
Will? So the Housing Alliance met. We had two new members, Eric Boucher and Bob Porter, which brings our total number to five. We are currently looking for individuals that have building and construction experience as well as potentially some banking experience. It's a really hard problem, and we're really in need of experienced and knowledgeable help. We got an update on the Habitat project from a director at Habitat, Mark Primo. We're continuing to try and provide guidance to builders so that those products that are in motion, that have a, taken advantage of the bonus density in order, with the understanding that they'll provide affordable housing, that we can provide them some guidance in terms of what that should look like. And then we also moved the action that we just took action on. Historical preservation also met. We're continuing to expand our cemetery inventory. We're considering a cemetery cleanup day sometime in the spring. There's been some interest in individuals that live nearby cemeteries that would be interested in helping, and they've actually approached a couple of the members. We're also starting to plan a dedication ceremony for the Danish Village Arch. And then we're also looking to update the site list, and that's coming soon.
Counselor Bayden?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, good evening. The only committee that I was on that has met during this time period was the Senior Advisory Committee, and it's actually interesting, I'll pass these out to my peers, they've actually talked about and proposed, at least looking at, and we've been asked about it for a while, is there a proposed senior sort of recreational area that is going to be up where the old water tower is, sort of behind the mobile station, between the mobile station and sort of the high school? And what's proposed in it is kind of a recreational area that will have a pavilion, have some pickleball courts, which people have been asking about for a while, some watching courts and some horseshoes area, and then kind of a walking circle around the outside of the facility. So they're pretty excited about that. I think it's been something the seniors have been asking for, for a while, so pretty exciting news. So just thought I'd share that.
This will actually take form in a CIP request as part of the budget, so it will receive, you know, further review and vetting.
If I could just ask a question, Peter. Was there any hazmat mitigation or anything? Because my understanding was, on the side of the tower, there might have been some concerns about soil mitigation requirements or something like that.
I think at this point, it's sort of conceptual. They still have, they're working with Mike. There's some, kind of those questions that still need to resolve, so they're kind of working on it, but this is just kind of a preliminary sort of thought about how to address some of the things they've heard about, so.
Chris?
So, Energy didn't meet since the last meeting. The Board of Education continues along in their superintendent search. There's a couple of different things out there. The first thing is some focus groups that are being scheduled for March 1st and March 2nd, one of which, March 1st at 7:00 PM is a town and business leaders focus group. I was advised by Donna Beely, the chair, that obviously, everybody in the town council is invited to that. We don't need to apply or put a submission in there. They'd like us to, you know, it's kind of our opportunity to go in and make some comments on the focus group part of it. And certainly, I'm not, that's at the high school all-purpose room, March 1st at 7:00 PM, if any of you are interested. And again, I would encourage you to attend if possible. I know the kneecap group is going to be there to discuss plans moving forward and, I guess, looking for our input in terms of criteria and things that we'd be looking for from the superintendent as well.
I did provide a press release that I'll send around, just so you can schedule it and get a little context as to how they want to run those groups.
Yep. And independent of that, though, or I shouldn't say independent, but separate of that, there's also a parent screening group, or part of a screening group that's being formed to be involved in the screening committee of candidates. Requests went out to parents for involvement. If anybody out there is a parent and is interested, they should send an email to Kelly Johnston at the school department at kjohnston@scarbrowschools.org with an email confirming your willingness and ability to attend all the required meetings, as well as the specific grade level and school attended by your child or children, if applicable. So interested parties, reach out to the school. I'm not sure what the requirements are, or if there's a quota for each number of school, but certainly if there's any interest out there from parents to actively participate, and I would encourage that, reach out to the school department. And, you know, again, two weeks late, school board is meeting tomorrow. And, you know, again, two weeks late, School Board is meeting tomorrow. One other thing I did want to mention, there is a February 25th School Board meeting with our legislative liaisons. And I believe the topic of discussion will be the EPS funding, partly because of the efforts of Councillor Rowan. So, while that is a School Board function, I certainly would suggest councillors, if available, to try and go. And certainly, if anybody has questions or anything they'd like me to forward to the School Board to be asked, that are obviously educationally related, then I would be happy to pass those on. I'm not sure the time or the location yet. I can certainly get that and forward it to councillors as it becomes available.
Chris, are members of the public, besides parents, going to be part of this advisory group?
I'm not 100% sure. The email that came out was from the superintendent. It was sent to me with everybody else as a parent. I just noticed that was one of the criteria in there. I'll follow up certainly tomorrow with, I know they were laying out an entire process of how it was going to work. I think that's been finalized, obviously. And the focus groups, I think, are more on getting our input on types of characteristics and attributes that we would be looking for, let's say, or would like to see in a successful candidate. I think this is more of a screening type to review applications versus criteria, that kind of stuff. Other issues, I mean, I'll certainly will ask the School Board if there's other involvement from us and from public as well.
And I think Councillor Chiazo mentioned that the School Board is meeting tomorrow, so I think there will be some further clarification of the process, which I think is going to be a very open and exciting process to search for a new superintendent. The Energy Committee, we're circulating a further draft of the report, went out to Energy Committee members. So, that's heading for a submission to the Town Council for a workshop in the month of February. We recently interviewed two composting companies, really the only two, I think, that exist in Maine, southern Maine. We Compost It and Garbage to Garden. As to what their proposals might be, they're actively expanding their business models. One of them is the organization that runs the transfer station here in Scarborough. The other is, I think, a gentleman who is-
Graduated from Scarborough High?
Graduated from Scarborough High School.
Southern Maine.
With an interesting business model. So, composting is one of the most difficult issues to deal with if you're trying to reduce your trash that's going into landfills. And so, that's why we're focusing some attention on it, so that we can present, the Energy Committee can present as clear a picture on what the options are and where other municipalities that are leading the way on these issues, how they're making it as palatable as possible for the community. I attended the library meeting, and I can't remember whether I reported on this or not, but I will note that the thing that caught my eye was the little free public library concept, this side of the road kind of alcove kiosk kind of thing. And it's online, the program is, got a website. And people who are interested, it's very much a, kind of a neighborhood resource. And people who have implemented them say it's an exciting addition to their neighborhood. So, I recommend that. And more information can be obtained from Nancy Crowell, who's been very active in promoting this idea. So, Town Managers Report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not to steal any thunder from Councillor Caterina, I did want to mention, working with her and a small group, we have prepared a simple, what we call civic engagement survey. It's one of the first pieces on this communication effort, and maybe a larger civic engagement strategy. And it's really intended to assess and understand people's preferences, how they get their information, how they prefer to get that. So, we expect that will help inform us as to which channels we need to be plugging into. We'll go live with that. It will be available through our website, and we'll use some of our other communication tools that we have in place to push people back to that site. It's not randomly selected, it's not highly scientific, but it's really one of those six or eight or nine-question surveys where, you know, stuffing the ballot box really doesn't make sense. We're just really interested in understanding what people, how they like to receive their information. So-
You didn't steal my thunder. Thank you. I totally went, I forgot to write it down.
We're going to go live tomorrow, and we'll keep it up for weeks or months or, you know, for some time to get a pretty good test in the community. Also, tax bills went out today, mailed today, so they're likely to be received by as soon as tomorrow for many of us. Joy, joy.
In my cubbyhole.
As was mentioned by Chairman Donovan, we have mapped out the next couple of months, if you will, or the next three meetings for workshops. There seems to be a willingness to meet a bit before your regular meetings. So, next meeting, two weeks from tonight, on February 17th, the Energy Committee will present their findings regarding solid waste reduction. That's likely to be probably an hour session. There'll be a written report as well as a presentation that evening. On March 3rd, we'll have a long-range facility plan. It's something that staff's been working on for some time, be a first looksee for you. And it will be a conversation point, perhaps, that the Finance Committee gets into in a little more detail. I'm sorry, March 2nd, excuse me. And then, the second meeting in March, Mike and crew, many of the folks that were here tonight, will like to do a stormwater management discussion with you. As part of our federal permit for stormwater controls, educating the elected officials on the basic standards and the public is a requirement of that. So, we'll accomplish that. And I think you'll find it perhaps educational, just in terms of appreciating the different levels of effort we take, including the street sweeper that goes up and down the road that's actually a mandate of our federal stormwater permits, that we clean up all that roadside sand religiously. I'll also be making my annual chamber address to the Scarborough Chamber, the so-called State of the Town, as we call it. It really ends up being some interesting statistics, much of the information from the recent Merida show, that's the real estate development group. It goes backward at some of the accomplishments over the past year and also foreshadows some of the initiatives looking forward. That's going to be February 11th, 7:30 in the morning. And this year, it's being held at Town and Country Federal Credit Union, their new facility here behind Hannaford. And I'll do the same presentation for the Kiwanis Club the following Friday, they've asked me to. So, this is the time of year where I kind of go on the, they call it the rubber chicken circuit. But it's really good to get out and engage with folks that I don't have the occasion to see very often. And I've always met with a lot of great questions, so I look forward to this time of year. And just lastly, I just want to relate, having known and worked with Jim Benedict for the times he wasn't in the council, I'm certainly better for knowing Jim. He was a big personality at times, certainly a kind heart, and I'm certainly better for knowing him.
Thank you. Start down here, Chris, with council comments.
Yeah, so I guess I'll start off also with, you know, my comments on Councillor Benedict. I didn't have the pleasure of serving with him, but I did get to sit across the table from him quite regularly on the School Board side. And I do appreciate certainly his stoicness when it came to his opposition at times to the points. But always a gentleman, never seemed to get riled or get rowdy, and I certainly appreciated that when it came to the difficult discussions. I did want to piggyback on Bill's comments about the composting. I did forget that in the Energy Report, I apologize for that. But I did want to point out also that Garbage to Garden is actually at the schools already and doing a very, from everything I've seen at the high schools, certainly doing a very good job with not only the education piece of it, but also the service aspect of it. So, both potential suppliers, if you will, are very well-established and have, well, they have different business models. I think both very good options for the town, and I'm sure the Energy Commission will be making recommendations moving forward as well for that. I guess last but not least, we, there was some preliminary budget information that came out from the state. I do want to, having gone through this once or twice before, I would just please like to request from everybody, council, me, board, public, let's be calm, let's not get excited about this. It's the normal process. While it's not good news, it is preliminary. We do need to work through what the real numbers are going to be, and we have to be aware of that. But the process as a whole needs to be very methodical and very precise, if you will. And we got to be careful we don't go down that slippery slope again of getting excited about numbers and letting things get kind of out of hand and take us off the focus. And that's making sure that our priorities are straight in town and how do we address that. It's not positive news, but it's not the end of the world. And it's also not, I don't think it's news that we're necessarily surprised about, maybe surprised at the amount, but I still think that's still generally preliminary. So, hope for the best, but plan for the worst, and we will get through this as well. But let's all remain calm, let's just work through the process, please.
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, and I think I didn't work with Benedict that much either, but I did observe him at times, and the voice that will be missed and, you know, thoughts and prayers with the family. And too, I'd like to kind of just build on Chris and actually, the gentleman that talked earlier, Chris Liefert, that kind of talked about as we approach this budget season, and as this community knows, we've had some challenges over the last, you know, 12 to 18 months. And I really hope everybody brings sort of a different plate to the table of we're all in this together and how can we work collectively to get to the best place we can as a community. So, I just really appeal to everybody. I think that was eloquently stated about stay calm, let's listen to each other, let's have respectful conversations and look forward to the process. We'll have some tough choices. And so, let's all work together. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Thank you. Couple of things. First, to Councillor Benedict, Godspeed and God bless. Anybody who sits behind this table deserves every person's respect in this town because it is a lot of work, it's a big commitment. And it's not just a commitment by him to the town, but it's also by his family and especially his wife Claire, because it takes a toll on the family over the years. And really wanted to say thank you to him. I too did not get to serve with him, but I do appreciate his service and his family's contribution to the community. So, God bless to all of them. I did want to mention to the Town Managers, State of the Town, I heard the new thing is to send a letter. So, you know, I, you know? You know, you make the choice. Also, wanted to mention, I might have a name that remind me later, I think I have someone that might be willing to serve on the Housing Alliance who has a banking background. So, please remind me, because I've got so many things going on. I'd be happy to talk to him and then forward his name. Two things really regarding, one public, actually both around the public comments and then council comments as well. The first regarding the preliminary news and people's receipt of that information and how it's shared and how to react to it. And so, I'll be honest, I heard it last evening at a meeting and my mouth dropped. I thought I was going to have a baby cow right there when I heard about it. But, you know, that's kind of a normal course of work, especially after what we went through last year. So, I too agree. I hope that we really walk into this softly, but at the same time, we provide the due diligence and ask everyone, not only the council, and I know we will, because it's, we have to make the decision, but the citizens remain diligent. But the bigger piece too, is our legislative delegation remain diligent in understanding and communicating with us, because we need to make a stand regarding how the town of Scarborough is being treated by this funding formula. And I think that that is a bigger issue that is outside of the decisions that we have to make regarding our budget. And I know that we're going to do the due diligence that we need. So, when we talk about drawing lines, I hope that when we rehearse asking people not to draw lines, that we're also practicing that in the mirror, because it's about those who suggest we're drawing lines, they too should not be drawing lines, because this is going to have to be a give and take conversation throughout the entire process, because we all want what is best for the town as a whole. Last is about the Pine Point. I really want to stress, you know, this is going to be an open, what I mean by Pine Point is the conversations around complete streets and the PAC projects and the vision, you know, one of the things that's very difficult in sitting in this seat is you really do have to have some vision going forward, the next 20 years, and hoping that what you're doing today really has a long-lasting positive impact. For me, it's a challenge that I have to deal with, that I know I can get better at. But when someone tells me that they want their little part of heaven to be left alone, but are active in telling their neighbors what they can and can't have on their property, doesn't really mesh up with us, because we're all supposed to be part of the community. And what I'm referring to is when I go back to the whole issue about the land swap and the King Street property, and everyone in Pine Point telling us what they wanted on that property, but yet we hear from citizens that says, well, but leave us alone and don't tell me what to do with my property. So, there has to be a balance in those kind of comments as well, because we need to make better decisions for the town and really look forward, because I think, you know, picking, not picking on King Street, but if you look at the Snowberry Park, it's a beautiful, beautiful project that really did work out well. And so, I think that we can all be part of that and all participate in that conversation. And that is it. If I can just get the time for the delegation and the School Board meeting, that would be great. But thank you.
Will?
So, I'd also like to extend my condolences to the Benedict family. I also didn't know Jim terribly well, but he was certainly an upstanding gentleman. So, my weekend was pretty well ruined by the preliminary numbers put out by the state. I don't know how familiar everyone is with them, but the, if you look at where we were in 2009, when we really started to, start to lose revenue, over, from that until 2016, our state subsidy was down about $1.9 million annually over the course of that time period. This year, with the preliminary numbers, they, we lost another $1.6 million, so almost the entire amount. I appreciate Councillor Chiazo's comment about staying calm, and I'm trying. But what happened last year was, it wasn't the formula that changed, it was, there was an additional appropriation from the legislature to education. And that's what rescued us from losing, I don't know all the details, but what got us from something like $900,000 down to only losing $150,000. So, at this point, my understanding is that the formula is the formula. For this year, that's state law. And any changes that we want to talk about in terms of how the inherent unfairness that we can talk about in relation to how Scarborough's been treated is really a conversation for future years. Really, all we can do this year is lobby our legislature for an additional appropriation. And certainly, I've started that process, although I'm trying to, again, stay calm. But I hope that we can all continue and really drive home the point, which is that, you know, the property taxpayers of Scarborough are paying for the education of the children of Scarborough. And the income taxpayers of Scarborough are paying for the education of the children of Cumberland and Falmouth. And that strikes me the wrong way. So, I'm going to set that aside and talk about some other things. Kindness Week is coming up next week. I hope that people will go to the Scarborough Kindness Project for ideas for the Random Act of Kindness Week. I'm sorry, it's the week after, it starts-
Valentine's Day.
Valentine's Day, it starts Valentine's Day. This coming week, we have the Fuel Rally for Project Races on Saturday. It's Saturday morning at the fire station. I don't know, do you know the exact time?
Yes, Tandano is the fuel assistance.
And then, something else to report is that the library is going to be collecting winter clothing. So, certainly, if you have spare jackets and snow pants and such, please take them there and mittens and hats. And then, there's a point about February break is coming up, it's coming up quickly. The backpack program is looking for donations. And essentially, what this is, is some of the children in town are given backpacks full of food that go home with them over vacations, so that, you know, to combat hunger, childhood hunger. They're specifically looking for instant potatoes, rice, pasta, vegetables, canned meats, pancake mix, syrup, crackers, chili and stew, muffin mix, hamburger helper, and snack food. And you can drop food off by, at any of the school offices, and it's due by February 8th.
And they'll take monetary donations? I think they are, but I don't know.
I can't agree to that.
Well, I'm sorry, there's also a list of what they don't need, maybe- Well, well, I'm, well, I'm sorry, there's also a list of what they don't need, maybe, I think that was at the bottom of it, too. Did you see that part as well?
I didn't, I didn't copy.
They don't need peanut butter.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of things that they, that they, so I think there might be, I don't know if it's a website or something we can go to.
You know, it's, it's been a couple, I've just seen Jessica Libby and Kelly Murphy's posts on Facebook, and that's where I base my stuff off. But if there is a website, I'd love to know.
I'll try and get it tomorrow.
Awesome.
Jean Marie.
Yes, as Mr. Hall mentioned, we are going to have the civic engagement survey on the town website, starting tomorrow, so I really encourage folks to answer a few questions for us. We're really interested in basically in knowing how people want to be communicated with, and how you get your news. I'm looking at the newspaper, folks, okay. But, the various ways, so that we'll know as a town how best to communicate with you. We are working on a town Facebook page, which should be coming soon or rather later. Let's see, my, Pine Point, the concerns about Pine Point. We had very successful reaction down at Hagen's Beach to the zone changes and whatever, and that's because we had civic engagement through this process called charrettes, which is kind of a fancy word for meetings and, and focus groups and whatever. There is a plan, I know with the planning department, because I'm a long-range planning committee, to do that same process in Pine Point. So, those people who are concerned about, oh, are we going to have any say in what's going on down there? Yes, you're going to have to say, there's going to be a lot of input, and please stay tuned, and please keep an open mind to, to what can happen, and what your neighbors may be interested in doing or not doing down there. Operation Hope, the last number I saw, and I haven't been on topic, because I've been fairly busy the last few days, was 110 people assisted to reach treatment, which I think's amazing, given we started in October. I met with Senator Chris Johnson from Knox County, I believe he represents, I can always get my counties confused when you get down east. They're, no, Lincoln County, sorry, Lincoln County. Lincoln County Sheriff's Department is starting an Operation Hope, and Officer Gill and Chief Moulton have been helpful with, with that, with them, and he was very thankful for that. Again, fuel assistance, 10 to noon at the fire station, right over across the street, please come up. There's going to be baked goods, it's going to be fun things for the kids to do, the kids can sit on the fire trucks and the ambulances. If you don't, if you're busy running around and getting groceries, they, we have a drive-thru, you can just drive through one of the bays, and give us some money and drive on and off, so, but it's very important, even though it's thankfully, it's been a very warm winter so far, and heating prices are low, there are still many people in this community who struggle with, with paying for fuel, so anything you can donate will be very helpful. I know I'm going to be there for the whole time. Usually my job is to go out and wave a sign on the sidewalk, that's what I've been known to do. I know some other councilors are planning to stop by and say hi, so come on in. Let's see here. I am trying to stay calm, too, about the school funding, potential loss of revenue from the school funding formula. I personally have never particularly cared for the way the formula's done. To me, an interesting thing that the legislature should be looking at is, okay, so you've got a town that's very wealthy, like we are, we're the third wealthiest town in the state valuation, and we have, you know, a school population that's supposedly not as high as some others, and then they do whatever they do, and Will's, Will's the expert in this, this. But we also have one of the largest, if not the largest, number of people on fixed incomes, retired people in this town. So, that's kind of like, they don't take that into consideration, and maybe they should, but, so I would just say, keep calm and contact your legislative delegation, because as much as we can complain about it and whatever, it's really helpful if people from town also say, "Hey, how can you help us out here?" And then last, but absolutely not least, Jim Benedict, I did have the pleasure of serving with Jim. Jim and I did not always agree on things, and fiscal, and what we should be spending money on in town, but I loved him to pieces, I really did, and I was very sad to hear of his passing, and he will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Each meeting, I like to be able to provide at least some comment or update on the goals that we set, so that we kind of keep an eye on those. The communications goal is one that we're active on. I know that the Rules Committee will be meeting probably within the next week or so, to start to analyze and develop rules for social media programs.
For this town, sure.
Jean Marie and the Town Manager have been working with our IT Department on the development of a Facebook page, which was one of the important initiatives, improving the electronic newsletter and other means, the survey that was mentioned previously. So, there's been an active effort to advance how we effectively communicate and hear what's going on with the constituents of our community. I'd like to end with a God bless you to Jim Benedict. I did serve with him for a couple of years, and he was very kind to me, very welcoming. He had his own viewpoint on things, but that did not deter him from being friendly and very pleasant person to deal with. So, with that, I'll ask for an adjournment motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?